I got you at the top, not, not.
One of them's presentation's number one.
Good morning, Jill.
Good morning.
Good morning. I hope you are.
Morning. Good to see you, sir.
Good morning.
Morning, to you. It's already Wednesday.
Good morning and welcome to the Water and Sewage Facilities Authority Regular Meeting. It is September 20, 2023 at approximately 8:30. This time, I'd like to ask, I make, please put your, any cell phones, electronic devices on silence. At this time, I'd like to have a motion first to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All right, unanimous, thank you. Now, I would like to ask Cheryl, Ms. Cheryl Matlock to deliver the invocation and Mr. Jeff Brandon to lead us in the pledge of the flag.
Will join me in prayer, please. My heavenly Father, first of all, we come to you with gratitude. We are so blessed. Please let us never take these blessings for granted. Secondly, I come to you and ask for wisdom. Please guide us in the decisions that we make today. May they be in the best interest of those that we serve in this county. May we always seek to do your will, for we pray all this in Christ's holy name. Amen.
Amen. First word.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Charlie, did we have anybody sign up to speak? Okay, I will forego the reading of the citizen comments. Item number six, presentation of the indirect cost study. So everybody knows, at Monday nights, Board of Commissioners meeting, the cost study was discussed, brought to our attention, and the Board of Commissioners did not approve the cost study. We wanted some additional information to be looked at. Therefore, I would like to have a motion to table the cost study until we can get it through the first part.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Unanimous. Thank you. Item number two, presentation of official proposal by the United Bank. Madison, all right.
So, just to give an update, the Water Authority commissioned multiple requests from different financial institutions, local to Griffin, and based on the recommendation of the Finance Committee, United Bank put the best proposal together, so we figured it would be best for her to come and actually present the proposal and answer any questions that you may have.
Super, thank you. All right, young lady.
Good morning.
Good morning.
That was quick. Okay, so I have prepared, and I don't know if this was, were you able to get it in this or, or?
No, they have copies.
Okay, perfect, so you all have copies, okay.
May I, just a second, would you pull your microphone down toward you a little bit?
That better? Okay, so you guys have copies. I'm gonna kind of go through this with you guys.
Make sure everybody's got.
Yeah.
Perfect, okay.
Does somebody not have a copy?
Uh, I, oh, that's this right here.
That's right, yes ma'am.
Okay, Madison.
All right, everybody got one?
Yes.
I don't, but.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right.
Yes, I do. All right, so first of all, just to give you guys an idea, the Wealth Management Division is a division of United Bank. We typically work with traditional investments similar to stock, bond, mutual funds, but for customers kind of like you guys that are looking for better rates on funds, we can offer money markets and CDs through a broker that offer national levels. So this is the way that we're able to get those five and a half or better rates on CDs. It is all encompassed as a part of our actively managed portfolio, so no matter whether it's stocks and bonds or CD accounts, they're all actively managed. So certainly as CDs are maturing or as things are changing, we would reach out to Joseph or whoever the contact would be and communicate all of that. All of our CDs are either FDIC or NCUA insured. NCUA is credit union insurance, so they're all fully insured. And I have prepared kind of two accounts here based on a discussion that Joseph and I have had. So if you look, that first bullet point is the operating slash investment account, that's about $5 million. Looking at, and again, an actively managed fixed income account that would be allocated to CDs and money markets. I've created two different ladders on the next side. I think we're, we're looking at that three-year ladder that I proposed last time, but I did provide a five-year just so that you guys can see what a little bit further looks like, just to see where we think rates are headed. The fee, just to be perfectly transparent, I had quoted you guys .10 last time, just wanted to tell you the dollar amount so that it's really clear out there. That's about $5,000 on a $5 million account. Our standard CD account fee is 15 basis points, so I did discount that to 10 basis points. And then the second account, the reserve account, is about 6.3 million. Again, it's an actively managed fixed income account, but that account would be invested primarily to money, or only to the money market fund. The fee on that one, again, is 10 basis points, which comes out to be about $6,300. So you guys know fees are charged to accounts quarterly, so what we would do is take that 10 basis points, divide it into four, and charge the fee each quarter so that by the end of the first full year that you've had the account, we've charged the 10 basis points. All right, next slide is the three-year ladder. This one keeps about 2 million in money market or cash. I call money market cash, so when you hear me say that, that's what I mean, but keep 2 million in cash at all times. Just so that you guys know, these are my most up-to-date rates as of like 3 o'clock yesterday. They change every day or can change every day. Traditionally, they're not moving a lot, but just so you guys know, they can change at any point, so what I may be quoting you today may be a little bit different than the actual rate that we lock, but I won't know that exact rate until it is actually locked. First column shows the CD terms, obviously from three months all the way to 36 months. All of those different terms, just so you know, would be different banks or credit unions. So what we do is put in the principal amount column 250 per bank or credit union. The rate is the next column that shows what you're earning. Interest earned at maturity is specifically showing like 250 for those three months at 5.3 is that 3,312. And then the maturity date on the far right, I did a start date of 10-1, just to give us easy numbers to, to play with there. Ideally, obviously, in a perfect world, these CDs, you guys wouldn't need the liquidity. If you did at maturity, we could distribute that out. If you didn't, in a perfect world, we'd roll it on to the back end of that ladder and kind of keep building out. But just to give you an idea, that interest earned at maturity column, that's about 259,000 in interest at the end of the three years from the CD interest alone. Our CDs pay simple interest, meaning that the interest doesn't compound back into the CD, it goes into the money market, which is the very bottom portion of the account. So it would accrue in the money market at currently earning 5.17. So the interest is also gonna earn interest, but just to give you guys really easy numbers, that shows those three years, kind of what I've proposed off the top. If you leave the CDs for three years or the way that I've proposed it, you'll wind up with 259 just from the interest on the CDs. The money market is the bottom portion, that GOXX, that's just the money market mutual fund that we use. It's currently earning 5.17, so if that were to hold for a year, you're looking at about 103 in interest just from the money market income. All right, I'm gonna go to the next one. I'm not gonna spend a ton of time on this five-year ladder, but just to give you guys kind of an update, it's the exact same concept, the only difference is that I've added essentially two years to the back end of it. That option from the CDs, you're looking at 658,000 in just interest if you hold those for the five years or whatever the proposed term. Yes, ma'am.
What was the total that we should earn for the three-year ladder?
Yes, ma'am, 259, 259,000, just from the CD interest.
So Madison.
Uh huh.
So you, these numbers that you plugged in are just some basic numbers, not numbers really relevant to what it is that we asked you about the investment.
No, there, I mean, there, if I had bought it yesterday, this is what I would have locked. So these are real numbers, it's just a matter of if it takes, let's say it takes three weeks to fund an account, things can change in that three-week period, so I won't know exactly, but they're trading, they're right around these rates. These are fairly accurate, I mean, very accurate rates. Just won't know for sure the way that it works, is I can't lock them until I have the money here to purchase.
The question was the principal amount, so you're talking 5 million on that first ladder, right?
Uh huh, that's right, yes.
And that's a number that was chosen by Joseph.
That's correct, that's right, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, so the five-year ladder, again, that's looking at 658,000. Five years is a long time, so I will tell you, our CDs, if you redeem them early, there's not technically a penalty, but those CDs are trading at whatever market rates are trading at. So it requires me to say, hey, we're thinking we may want to get some of the five-year money out. Let's say we're gonna get a million of the five-year money out. I reach out to my broker. If rates by the time, let's say two years from now, you withdraw all those CDs, if rates have lowered, you may get an, you may actually have an increase in your price on those, but they are gonna trade at whatever that CD's trading at. So in some cases, it could be a discount, in others, it could be a premium, but I won't know until you actually go to redeem that. So there isn't a set penalty price, just so you guys understand that. When we're redeeming these, it's gonna be based on kind of the market situation where interest rates are, are at the time that you redeem it. All right, and then last page, I want to give you guys some information on the money market. It's currently yielding 5.17. Those rates can change daily. In the last three months, I've seen it bounce from 5.16 to 5.18 to 5.17, so it's still in that 5.17 range over the last couple of months, but just so you know, that price can change at any point. With the CDs, once you're locked in, those won't change. So the difference in the money market and the CD is you lock the term on the CD and the rate won't change. With the money market, it can. And then that, the CD, excuse me, the money market provides liquidity. So if you guys were to tell me today, hey, I needed to get X number of dollars, I could have it in a checking account within three to five business days at the most, usually within two days, but just give me a few extra days just to be safe. But does provide liquidity where if you had to access it, that would be the place that you would access it. The money market is a fund that is invested in a portfolio of U.S. Treasury and government securities maturing in 397 days or less. What that means is it's secured by short-term government instruments, so T-bills, bonds, things like that, collateralized fully by the U.S. Treasury and government securities. Just so you guys understand, that means it is not FDIC insured. CDs are FDIC or NCUA insured, money market is not. It is fully collateralized by the U.S. Government, but it is technically not FDIC insured. We don't anticipate the price on the money market to change, but the rate can at any point. The rate would be the part that we would anticipate to be more variable than, than the price at all.
So what is the disadvantage that this is not insured for us?
I guess with government money, do you have an obligation to have that insured? If you do, then obviously the CD route is the way that we need to go, but technically, this isn't. So it's government-backed, obviously, the way that this would have to fall below a dollar, so meaning if you put $200,000 in there, it's gonna match you $200,000, then you're gonna accrue the 5% on that. In order for it to drop below that, so in order for your 200 to go below that, the dollar would have to break, meaning the value of the dollar would be less than a dollar. We don't anticipate anything like that happening, but obviously, we don't have our magic crystal ball to know exactly what's coming. So I do just want to make that really clear, that it is technically not FDIC insured. We have plenty of other client money, business money, things like that, that are invested in this money market, and we're confident in it, but I do want to make sure it's really, really clear to you guys as to how this money's invested.
Well, the CDs are government insured, but the money market is government bonds, it's kind of.
That's right.
One, six and one and a half dozen of them.
That's right.
Technically.
Yes, sir.
But in terms of liquidity and need, it almost sounds like we need to flip-flop the two.
Okay.
Because the money market account is our reserve account, it's not the one that we would draw from first.
Okay, okay.
Isn't that true?
True.
Our, the money that we have with the county is our active account money. It's the money we use first, is it not?
Correct. But remember, the, we, the operating account, we're only taking a small portion of that, and the amount of money that's left in the operating account is well more than.
Right.
What we, our current needs. So, yeah, we could flip-flop them.
Or we could do them both in the ladder.
We could, we would just be locked in at three-month intervals. But with this being an actively managed account, could you talk, if, if some board members have concern on the money market not being FDIC insured, with it being an active account, this isn't gonna happen in a 12, a 24-hour period.
Right.
You're gonna have some indication, and then talk to us and then tell us, hey, this is what we think's happening. Do you want to, this is our recommendation, correct?
That's right, that's right. So we'll recommend to you guys what, what we might, would think would happen. Certainly, as we get closer, we anticipate rates end of 2024 or early 2025 for the Fed to start cutting rates. At that point, that's when this money market rate will start ticking down, really ticking down. Obviously, it could, could float around that 5%, 5.1 for a while here. So if it does, then obviously, we're gonna tell you, leave your money there. If at any point, we feel like those three-year, four-year, five-year rates start going up because the yield curve begins to flatten, then we may recommend, hey, if you don't have a liquidity, can you put some out there? So it is an actively managed account where I'll be kind of monitoring it. Obviously, it will be based on what you guys, as far as availability with the funds and planning for the funds have, but we can make recommendations based on where the market's at. Certainly, right now, this is, this three-year and five-years based on where we're at right now with interest rates.
Well, if I had to comment, the reserve account is the one we touched last, and the money market funds, not too many months ago, were under 1%, way under. I think that's the one that I'd belayered in CDs, because we don't expect to touch that before we go through the other operating money.
So thinking maybe flip them.
I know, yeah, I know the CDs are, I mean, the money market's very good today, but like you say, that, that won't last.
I would think we'd see it at least last till the end of next year. Now, when, when rates start dropping, it may go from five to four to three and move quickly, I don't know. I can tell you, it has gone up with the Fed raising rates just as quickly as they have. So since, I guess, 2022, we've seen this money market increase pretty quick.
Yes.
We'll take it, but, you know, you don't know how long that'll stay that way.
With an investment account, then, you, your bank would be, or advising?
Yes, ma'am, we are. We're fiduciary advisors, which just means we're legally obligated to do what's in our client's best interest, but yes, ma'am, I would be the advisor on the account. We have a group of us, so it's not me driving any true decision-making, we have a group of us that work together in an investment committee that we present to monthly, they're actually meeting this morning at 8:30. So we have monthly investment committee meetings where we present kind of an overall what we're doing in clients' account and get their blessing, so that's an outside board that approves what we're doing. They don't see any specifics on accounts, but they do see an overall, hey, these are where CD rates are, this is where cash is, on a balanced objective, how that's invested in those things. So there's a group of us that kind of give their blessing before we, we truly do any kind of pushing this out there to clients.
All right, any other questions for Madison?
Well, I think this, this is well thought out, and we need to move money in these things, in my opinion. And I, I don't look at this, at the money market and government bonds any different than I look at the insured.
That's my question, is there really a difference?
No, not really. Both ways has got the government, you've got government bonds or government insurance, so.
Right.
Okay.
Plus, we're not a tax-collecting agency.
All right, I just wanted to make sure, okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
We appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Sorry you missed your other meeting.
No, it's perfectly fine, perfectly fine.
You gave us exactly what we wanted to hear, I believe.
Good, okay, perfect. Hey, I'm gonna leave just a handful, these are very broad kind of brochures about what we do, but if anybody has more questions to better understand how we work, these are here for y'all, so if you need them, you've got them.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. Item number seven, consider approval of the August 16, 2023 regular scheduled meeting minutes and the August 16, 2023 executive session minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no objection, taking them together, I move we approve both as, as submitted.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Unanimous, thank you. Just so everybody kind of has a flavor, without the Secretary Treasurer here, it's, we're moving a little bit slower on capturing votes and stuff like that. All right. Item number two, consider approval of the Water Authority, the COG, City of Griffin, August Annual Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. You?
Abstain because I was not able to attend the meeting.
Okay, we have seven, two, four, six, seven, and one abst, abstention. Is that okay? Yeah, okay. Item number three, consider acceptance of the September 6, 2023 Planning Committee Minutes and the September 13 Finance Committee Minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna move we approve the Planning Committee Minutes only because I wasn't at the other one.
Okay.
I think they need to be taken separately.
I was at both meetings.
Okay, can you?
I can move that we approve both, to accept both.
All right.
Okay, but I can't approve that they did. I'd rather have them separate, because I wasn't at the planning meeting, so, not that I don't trust what she said, but.
Is that a reason to abstain because you didn't attend?
You can vote to approve minutes even though you weren't, were not in attendance.
They were presented.
All right, did everybody hear that? You can vote to, all right, so we have, let's make sure, we have a motion to approve both minutes by Cheryl.
You're not approving them, we're just accepting them.
Excuse me, yes. We have a motion from Cheryl to do that, do I have a second? A second from Dick?
I'll move that, thank you.
All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Unanimous, thank you. Item number eight. Making sure I'm in the right place, yes. Special Committee reports, we'll start with Planning Committee. Mr. Morrow?
Okay, we did several things in the planning committee, and you'll see a couple of them later on in the agenda, but we had a good discussion defining the GIS requirements, and I think we had a general approval, except for the idea that we were gonna have to do it, but we wanted to make sure that the other departments that needed GIS work were gonna pay us for their share, and so, although agreed on doing it, we passed the buck to the Finance Committee to set up a budget with the, with the financial issue solved. And we also talked about the former sewer plant out at Dundee, Plant Number One, as we call it, and the county said they didn't have the money to maintain it, they didn't particularly want it at the moment, and we have no use for it, so we had directed the, Mr. Johnson to, and Steve, to talk to some brokers and see if they wanted to put it on the market just to sell it, what, what that looked like. And the next three, we talked about the sewer feasibility study, and we have talked here about having agreement to move forward with our sewer project, but this will bring in a plan of the steps that need to be done before anything actually happens. So this schedule and chart would show creating the committees, stakeholders, and steps for actual implementation of a sewer plan, and that should be ready for our next general meeting to discuss.
Okay.
May I make a correction to, to his report? The, the actual county Board of Commissioners has never been asked whether or not we wanted the Springs plant. So I think the comment that the Secretary made was that there is no money budgeted for any projects of that nature, but it has never actually come to the board and asked the board if they would take over that property, so.
Okay, I just assumed it.
Yep, what he said.
My assumption, but you're right, Mr. Ledbetter said that, not, not the board.
The, Mr. Led, uh, Dr. Ledbetter was talking from his hat as a manager. Uh, the Board of Commissioners has not allocated or adjudicated on that issue at all.
Okay, well, that's good to know. And, uh, so later on in the, we're gonna be talking about what to do with it, so.
Yes.
That puts a different spin on it.
Yes. All right. Ms. Matlock?
Yes, we discussed what Madison has presented. That was our primary point of discussion. We also had discussions relative to the Flint River water line relocation change orders, um, the cost of GIS services that we are going to share also with the county, and the Jordan Hill water line relocation that was begun in two thousand and twenty. And we're gonna discuss most of those later on, so.
Okay, a little later on the decision. All right. Uh, both of you done? Both Planning Committees? Okay, Planning and Finance, thank you. Item number nine, General Manager Report.
So we're gonna start with the Customer Summary Report. Um, as you see, um, everything is looking up. We've fiscal year-to-date, we've added one hundred and fourteen active connections. So I just want to preface, when I say active connections, these may have been vacant, unbilled at some point in time that are just now being activated. This is not actual new meter installs. That's what is reflected on meter sales. So, um, I'm in the process of trying to understand exactly what, how we can represent that. But, uh, if we look at the year, year-over-year change column with the green arrows, that shows you the account connections incre- ticking up. And obviously, you see, um, the majority of our customer change is in residential. And if you kind of correlate that to the meter sales report, those are, the majority of them are new meters. So I just want to be clear on, when I say active connections, what that means. Moving on to the non-revenue or water sales summary. Uh, sorry, I didn't have that in y'all's, um, in the agenda packet that was posted online. But fiscal year-to-date, we've sold one hundred and fifty-nine million gallons. Uh, we're roughly five percent over budget or over, uh, budget expectations. So really, nothing, um, nothing is jumping out at us with any red flags. Moving to the non-revenue report, um, one thing we've added to the graph is the temperature over time. So, uh, we're, we're, obviously, you see, the higher the temperature goes, the more water theoretically should be put on the ground just because of, uh, chlorine degradation. But, uh, fiscal year-to-date, we've put eleven million gallons on the ground.
Where, what color is that on the graph?
That's the black line up top. You see that dotted line?
Mm-huh.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that, is that relevant to the heat index?
Yeah, that's, uh, that's actually taken from the, uh, UGA Griffin Dempsey rain gauge and temperature
Mm-huh.
sensors at the UGA campus.
Okay.
And then moving on to meter sales.
Just, it's amazing how much more information we get as we've progressed along.
Mm-huh.
You know, for us, this is new information, but think of a new person who walks in here for the first time, and all of a sudden, we're talking about ambient temperature and what we're doing and humidity and stuff like that. They all go, what?
Yeah.
Thank you, Joseph.
Um, and then the, uh, and the meter cell summary report. So, um, we've sold seventy-nine meters, and the percent of budget projection, that twenty-three percent, we're over, we're over the time that we should be, or we've sold more meters year-to-date than what we anticipated. So I'm still trying to figure out exactly how I'm gonna present that as well. But everything is tracking along, and we are, we're looking to hit our budget expectations. And then the Fire Hydrant Maintenance Report. So I know I've told you all month after month that we haven't met, we're not meeting our goal, but I promised that there was a plan. Well, if you look at the the first sheet, we're still lacking three hundred and twenty-nine meters. But if you flip to the next page, I promised a plan, and we do have a plan. So this is current, so the last report that you looked at omitted September. So we're always presenting one month behind, right? This Fire Hydrant Maintenance Detailed Report that you see is actual current month. So when the date that this report was printed, November fourteenth was the last day that the gentleman inputted data. And if you look down at the bottom, you see that one in red, we were only one, one fire hydrant short of meeting our expectation up to year-to-date minus the September three hundred and fifty meters or fifty hydrants. So.
Show us which one you're showing us in red. I I can't, I don't know which one it is.
So this sheet right here, if you go down to the very bottom, you can see the Fire Hydrant Service Actual versus Goal.
Yeah.
So we were one, one hydrant short. And when I ran the report this morning, we're roughly fifteen hydrants ahead of where we should be. So what this is now going to, the information, the power of this information is gonna be able to give Danny a forward-looking report. We're now, depending on vacations and, um, uh, tentative time taken off, we can now project, do we have enough resources to add on valve maintenance or any additional resources? So that, the report's coming together. But I wanted to show current month standings. We, that, um, monthly goal of three hundred and twenty-nine fire hydrants touched should start ticking down going forward. So I just wanted to show you kind of what we were, the plan that we do have in place, and it is working.
When, when this is, when we're working on this, is this someone working with, um, a work detail? Is this just our employer?
So this is our staff working with inmate labor.
Okay.
So this is two Water Authority staff members with four total inmates. So then what we can do is we can actually look at it from a, uh, financial obligation of how, how many dollars it's taking us to maintain these hydrants just on the, our Water Authority staff. And then if we wanted to throw in the, uh, fee that we're paying the, um, the CI for inmate labor, we can now show, this is what it would cost if we wanted to do it all ourself versus the shared cost right now. So that's what we're gonna end up moving to.
Okay, great.
Um, and then we're moving on to the projects. So, starting with the sewer feasibility study, uh, Rebecca Lindsey will be presenting to the BOC Workshop on October second to, um, discuss the study and ultimately get the Board of Commissioners buy-in on kind of our methodology. The Plant Number One property, as previously discussed, um, in the various committees, we've reached out to, um, a local realtor asking if they see a market for this property. The comment made to me was, I need to do some research on it because, uh, it, I don't know if it's marketable in its current state because there's a bunch of big voids there. Um, and I reached out to TJ regarding the BMX representative, and his response to me was, they wanted to team up with a municipality. They didn't want to actually buy the property and run it. So I don't think that's gonna be an option. But we're, we're still actively working on that. CDBG Phase Two, all the sewer has been installed, all the ladders have been installed, and they were, they're in the process of decommissioning the septic systems and tying people on. I'm still waiting on an updated schedule from Charles, um, and I'll present that. Hopefully, we should be done next month, but I, until I get the schedule, I don't really know.
So you were able, excuse me, you were able, excuse me, the person who was working at Plant, the Springs Plant, is no longer working there. They're working in some other service.
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Elliott is actually doing fire hydrant maintenance.
Okay, so that's where you got the extra person to be able to do it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, so we sent him, uh, to mandate school. So in July, August, the, we were really short on the total number of fire hydrant touches. He was gone for five weeks getting post-certified to, uh, manage inmates.
May I throw out, throw out something real quick? You talk about the finishing, hooking up the last part of Experiment to the Sewer. That area had become pretty sorry. I hope the county is seeing from previous sewer work that there's been money being invested in that area is improving. Is that, have you, has the board seen that? No?
Uh-uh, no changes yet.
Okay. That's, that's kind of discouraging, but never mind. Go ahead.
And then the Flint River Bridge relocation, um, the contractors installed roughly fifty percent of the pipe to date, and they are actively, they should start boring, uh, the directional bore this week. And then the proposed rezoning preliminary plat construction plan review, uh, these are the projects that Parker currently has on the books. And we show the detailed report showing a little bit more insight into each development with potential square foot, building square foot or lots. Uh, that'll come online. And if anybody has any questions?
Um, I want, excuse me, I think it was on, um, Moose Club Road that I drove down, and there is a trailer park there?
A what? Yeah, that's on what highway?
On Mobile Home Park.
Is it on nineteen forty-one?
Yeah, uh, it's on Moose Club.
It's also Moose Club.
Uh-huh. So is, is that a private, uh, water plant there?
So.
And septic and sewer?
I, there's five private sewer inside Spalding County, and I think that's one of them. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I can't, I mean, I don't know, just in looking at it, doesn't look like anybody's looked at anything around there. And I would just would be questioning what their septic system looked like and how their water really is.
So water, I'm not familiar. We'll, we'll look at that. Uh, but regardless, regarding sewer, if they are not tied to public sewer, they have to either have been permitted through the Department of Public Health
Yes.
for the septic system, or if the septic system is larger than ten thousand gallons a day, it has to go to the State EPD. Or they can have a direct discharge through the State EPD. So if they're regulated by the State or Department of Public Health, the Water Authority, we have no jurisdiction.
But how do we, how do we know if that's what they're doing?
Um, I can.
Because some of these clearly, I mean, this, this place looks like it's been there forever.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I'll, I'll pull the, um, I have all the MPDS permits inside Spalding County. Let me verify that they're one of them. And what I can do is, if they are, I can reach out to the state entity and see if they have any violations on the books. But if they have a violation, correct me if I'm wrong, Brandon, but, uh, that should, that's public information. So we, we should have gotten a notice. But I'll, I'll do some research and let you know.
Thank you.
Quinn, I wonder if they're not tied to the Moose Club.
And see, I don't, I don't know if they're on an actual, like, city sewer.
We'll find out.
Yeah. I mean, it would be good if they were, but I mean, just finding these pockets of these homes, and you don't know what they're.
When Rebecca was presenting her information, in the back of my mind, I remember the Moose Club having a, a separate permit.
Uh, the Moose Club having.
The Moose Lodge has a separate permit.
So.
The Moose Lodge facility itself, they have a discharge permit under the small camp system.
Okay, but that doesn't necessarily tell us what's going on across the street.
I'll, I'll research.
Just if you get a chance, just look at it and see, um, this is another area for us to figure out if there's a need for us to do something.
You done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, do I have a motion to accept, uh, the General Manager's Report?
So moved.
I have, I have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Ms. Quinn, did you?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I'm sorry, wrong. Uh, unanimous. Thank you. Old business. Uh, we have, uh, tabled the indirect, uh, cost study. Item number nine, new business, consider approval of change order number one for the Flint River Water Line relocation.
But, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, do we need to take a vote to table that?
No.
I know we said we did, but.
Just take no action.
Well, I'm just saying, for the record, shouldn't there be something official about?
If you want to table it, then motion to table isn't, would be in order.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to table that, uh, item number one under old business.
So.
All right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Unanimous. Thank you.
I think what you did before was just remove the presentation from the agenda, which was under presentation, it's not under, um, old.
An action item.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, back to consider approval of the change order number one for Flint River Bridge Water Line relocation.
Uh, Mr. Johnson, would you tell us again the, the amount?
So the delta in the change order versus what, or the, the delta, the change in cost is roughly seventy-five thousand dollars to the overall contract.
So we move to approve the change order in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
My motion.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, any more discussion?
Yes, Joseph, what is the nature of the change?
So the nature of the change is, the contractor, the contract was awarded in February. The contractor had a boring contractor lined up, a sub, to start the directional bore in March or April. We didn't physically acquire all the, um,
Easements.
until July nineteenth. So we didn't give the formal notice of proceed until July thirty-first. So we held the contractor up.
Okay.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for going along. All right. Item number two, consider approval of the Jordan Hill Road Water Line Relocation, GDOT invoice.
Mr. Chairman, this was a pop-up expense from years ago, and what's the amount of that, Joseph?
Uh, approximately four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars.
So I move that we approve that. I'd rather have a specific amount, but
Well.
if the amount that's been specified, it's my approval.
Does everybody on the board understand what, why this is? I mean, I, I didn't come to the finance meeting, but.
We didn't pay the bill.
No, it's more than we didn't pay the bill.
So.
I second so we can discuss it.
All right.
So to give a little insight of how we got here, um, in two thousand and twenty-one, the Georgia DOT wanted to modify, relocate, or do something with Jordan Hill Bridge as the old bridge. Part of that work was gonna require the water line of the Water Authority to be relocated. The Water Authority voted to roll that work inside GDOT's project. Uh, Paragon did an original engineer estimate. It came in around one hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. GDOT bid the project. It came in at two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. It was in May of two thousand and twenty-one that GDOT said, okay, this was the bid, please cut us a check, uh, for approximately two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. The letter was sent to Dave Lamb. We reached out to Dave Lamb after we received this letter from, or the invoice, and Dave never received that letter. So we were still trying to figure out exactly what's happened. When information gets disseminated or delivered to the Annex Building, where does it go after that? Because he didn't get it. Um, so it, I just wanted to make sure if, to figure out if Dave knew or not, and he has no record of ever receiving any letter. So now that the project is officially closed in February of this year, GDOT's saying, you owe us four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars because that includes additional work that was added to the project. Who added it? I, I don't know. I don't have any notes on it, but I would assume that the engineer that we had authorized the work at the Water Authority's request. So that's how we've gotten to the four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars.
This is right outside of Sun City, so everybody knows. It was a big, huge issue at Sun City to be able to do it. And as I talked to Brian Upson about it, uh, the GDOT came out there and then said, oh, we can't do anymore because the water lines haven't been moved. And we said, oh, oh, that's not our responsibility to be able to do that. We paid two hundred thousand dollars or something to be able to get them moved. And they said, yep, the Water Authority hasn't done. done their responsibility to move these water lines. It will be another 90 days before we can get the bridge open and ready to go. Now, that, nothing to do with the Water Authority. That was just me as a Sun City resident being told, and I started sticking my nose in to be able to do it. And it really had to do with how much distance they wanted to be able to easement, to be able to do it. They had to have land from Sun City to be able to create the full easement they needed to be able to move the water lines onto. So-
So, Stephanie, you might remember this, and Clay, you might remember this, but weren't we, didn't we have like a grant for bridges? There was a, we had, there was a fund for, that we had, there was a fund for bridges. I don't know if TJ is, is familiar with them. But Jordan Hill Road was one of the bridges that came under where that money came from. So, I'm just a little confused too as to where that funding, there's, I don't know if we need to ask Jenna, but Jenna, but at some point, we had gotten money as a county to, for bridge funding, whether it came from LARF or GDOT or whatever, and there were three bridges that we had decided needed to be fixed, and Jordan Hill Road was one of the ones. So, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, yeah, we gotta pay GDOT, but somewhere there should be funding that went, that was attributed to that, that was existing and not necessarily Water Authority money.
Go ask Jenna. We can find out from Jenna. Do we need to, I'm willing to pay, we owe GDOT money.
Yeah, we, it, that bill has to be paid, but I'm saying, instead of eating our money, I feel like there was a grant that the county got or something that we got that would have done three or two, three or four bridges, and Jordan Hill Road was one of them. So, we need to see where that tranche of money is, and it may help us to offset what we happen to pay for this.
All right. So, first, let's approve the 470, do you have an exact-
Charlie's getting the exact, she's, she'll be down in a second with the invoice. So, the exact dollar amount is $474,751.15.
That's my motion.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on that? Now, let's make sure you have an obligation to go find out from Jenna. Yes. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you, Vice Chair. All right. Item number three, Consider Adoption of the 2020-2040 Griffin Spalding Wastewater Management Plan.
So, years ago, the Water Authority and the county and the city joined efforts to update this wastewater master plan or management plan. Basically, what happened is when the Springs Plant closed, this wastewater management plan, anything that was related to the Water Authority, got stripped out of it. So, that service area for Phase One and Phase Two of the Dundee Mills area is now City of Griffin service area. So, anything that was related to the Water Authority has basically been removed from this document. So, that's the reason why the executive summary was generated, and it alludes to that fact where it, while it says Griffin Spalding Water Authority Management Plan, it's really a Griffin Management Plan, because right now, they're the only sewer provider.
Move to adopt it.
All right. That's your recommendation too, yes?
Correct.
All right. I have a motion to move to adopt, or do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I, I do have a question, sir, but a question. Because in the service delivery agreement between the county and the city, there were documents that talked about service areas, and I understand that at one point, the, the Water Authority or Spalding County had gotten permission from the City of Griffin to take over the Pine Tree area as a sewer, so, as, as their service area. So, I, what, I guess what I'm looking at this is that we don't, we don't really have any input into this. This is their plan. We don't, we don't have a stormwater or, or sewer plan for Spalding County or the Water Authority.
As of right now, we don't. So, the original plan that was done before this, or what this revised, it included the Springs Plant that talked about, the Water Authority owned and operated that plant, so it was part of the wastewater management plan.
Right.
This new plan with the Water Authority decommissioning Plant Number One, anything related to the Water Authority is now obsolete.
Right.
Now, I preface that with, as soon as we officially move on the sewer route, if that is what the board chooses to do, this waste, the, the Water Authority in Spalding County will then now have to create a new plan that will show how things will develop out.
So, the lift station that came from Highland Mills became part of the City of Griffin's assets?
Yes, ma'am.
Once they started providing sewer?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and we agreed to that in our Water Authority-
We did. That was part of the stipulation. We, there were nine requirements for the city to take over that infrastructure. We had to, the Water Authority had to go in and camera line. We spent a considerable amount of money getting red zone robotics out there to visually inspect.
Mm-hmm.
We had to have a due diligence done on each panel. We had to bring it up to City of Griffin requirements and put it on their SCADA system, and once that was all done, they would accept and take over the operation and maintenance, and now that asset's on their books. So, it was discussed, and the board approved it. Because remember, the Water Authority had no, at that time, the plan was to get out of the sewer business all as one.
So, and I guess what I'm trying to say is, is that we had no say-so in what, in determining what the change in our service deliver, our service delivery area.
We did.
The Water Authority did.
We, we did, because the Water Authority had to give up that service area because it was defined as Water Authority service area for sewer.
Okay.
So, we did give it up, and the maps have been modified, and the only, there's, there's only one area inside the Dundee Mills location that is still shown as Spalding County service area, and we specifically requested that island, because if the Board of Commissioners ever decided wanted to do another CDBG grant, we couldn't do it if it was the City of Griffin service area.
Okay.
So, if there is no future expectation to-
To expand.
Do that, it, it would be my recommendation, give that entire service area, that island, to the city and let them have one contiguous area.
Okay.
So, there's nothing else in this document that could possibly constrain us in the future?
No. No.
Okay. I, I, I've had a motion and a second and discussion anymore. All right, all those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Unanimous, thank you. Water Authority Attorney to address the wasteload allocation permit and request further direction from the board.
So, we, we know that there was a wasteload allocation permit request that was made by someone outside of the authority and not, and not at the request of the authority. And I just need your direction as to, to what to do about that. We, we discussed it briefly, but we did not give me permission to, to do anything about it, such as write a letter saying, please don't do anything like this in our name in the future, and also to just accept that, I mean, I mean, we have the information now. It's directed to us, and we want to make sure that nothing is, nothing further is done in our name.
So, you need really the permission for, like I said, to this letter, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Joseph, your recommendation?
I think it needs to be done, because at this point, if, who knows who else can submit wasteload allocations on our behalf?
And, and we don't want any further action to be taken.
Based on that report?
Right. That, that looks as if it is being done on our behalf.
So, how do you want this motion moved in?
Yes.
Because I'm going to move to let you do all the above that you think is necessary, but that-
Yes.
That's not the right motion.
I want to make sure that we're not going to wind up getting a bill for something we never asked for.
We would, if we got a bill for something we never asked for, we would not pay it.
Oops.
Make sure it's set on record.
But in reality, this is something that we probably was going to do down the, the line anyway, but it's done now.
It, it's done now, yes.
So-
Does this other party have the same information or have that information from that report?
They were copied as well.
They were copied on the final report.
There was a, there was a long list of, of copied on, on the report, so.
So, so, I, I think the motion should be that we give our attorney and staff permission to, to contact the agency and the applicant, the requister, and let them know that Spalding County, nothing is to be done without this, without direct contact with either our attorney or our General Manager.
Acknowledge, first of all, that we were, that this occurred without our permission, and secondly, that no further action is to be taken in our name.
That's exactly what I, my motion is.
All right, we have a motion.
And I'll second it.
And second. Any more discussion on this? Just, just so everybody knows, good news finding it. This is just one of those things we just kind of found as we were looking around on things, so, all right.
And I believe the offending party is, is aware at this point that, that we know that, but we just want to put that in.
Officially let them know.
Yes.
All right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Unanimous, thank you. Item number five, Consider Approval to Move 5 Million from the operating account into an interest accruing account.
So, sorry, were you going to say something?
Jim, did you?
We have a proposal, uh, the first page there in the CDs and the money market, the laddering, the first sheet, for $5 million, which I think that works too, unless you want it all in the CD. But this is the operating account money.
Yes.
So, I think that works for the operating account money. It leaves you $2 million. So, emergency funds, and the rest is layered into CDs. So, I don't see why that motion should be to approve that first page for the 5 million in the operating account.
So, the, going back to the presentation and the questions that were asked, do we want to swap it and do the 6.3 in the CD for the three-year or a five-year CD? Because if I'm, well, I guess it really doesn't matter. Whichever way you want to go.
So-
Well, I think this is appropriate at the operating, because that 2 million in the money market gives you some flexibility if you need more for some reason than what is still in the operating account.
Because with that, with that scenario, we have, if we move the five, we're still going to have roughly 4.4 in our cash account. With the two, will give us around 6.5 million.
So, when you're saying cash account, you mean our operating account?
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me. So, right now, we have 99 days of-
We have 200-
That's a different-
Nine months of fund balance.
We have roughly 224 days, yes.
Okay, so-
Just in the reserve, just in the reserve.
That's not this-
If you look at our total cash position, it's around, it's close to like 5, 550 days.
Okay, so, we have that amount in our operating account. What is the, what is the intent to, what, what we actually leave in the operating account that is liquid for day-to-day operations?
Stripping 5 million from the nine will leave roughly four.
For actual operating expenses?
Correct. And our revenues to expenditures, our revenues are outpacing our expenditures right now.
Okay.
And I see, I see that in the foreseeable future as well.
So, I really don't understand a lot of this. I just don't want us to, to take a lot of risk, but because so many people on the board seem to have a grasp of it, I'm just-
Well, my motion is that we use the $5 million laddered with the 2 million of it in the money market for the operate, $5 million coming from the operating fund.
I second.
All right. Any more discussion? Jim, you're, you're all into this usually, so-
Yeah.
I'm listening. Which ladder did put that in your motion?
The three D, the three-year. I agree. I think we need to do three-year, the three-year ladder.
So, how, how much is going to go into the three-year ladder?
5 million.
How much is going in the money market?
We hadn't gotten to that one yet.
Well, it would be, it'd be 2 million.
Two of the five is in the money market, three is in the CDs.
So, total 5 million, three and two, because I was not understanding that either.
So, back to your question, if we leave four in the cash account, and then we have two in money market that's completely liquid in this three-year CD structure? We would have $6 million at cash that we could pull at any time.
Okay.
Which is oodles of plenty.
For us on a regular basis, that's oodles, yes.
So, yeah, I guess in my brain, I'm trying to think, we're, we're talking about doing these things for, and I really don't know how much money that's going to cost, and we haven't even projected what we're looking at spending. Just want to make sure that we are, our hands are not tied when we get ready to make a move.
And she said she could even get the CDs within, what, three weeks?
Yeah, she, we would only pay, it would either be at a discount or a premium, depending on what that rate was actually changing or chart, being charged at that day when she sold it.
Okay.
Just, go ahead. Item five, where it says, consider approval to move 5 million. That's actually, we're approving to move 3 million.
No, it's 5 million total. Two is going to be in a money market cash account. Three is going to be in a $250,000 increment CDs.
All right, because that 4 million that's left in the county account and the operating funds, we're getting nothing on that.
Okay, what's item six then? How much money is that?
That's, that's the reserve account, the one that we-
We're going to talk about that. How much money is that?
6.3.
All right.
So, we're moving 11.3 million dollars around.
No, no, we're moving five.
Moving it not at the same place.
We're going to talk about the reserve account.
But total, we're moving 11.3 million dollars around.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right.
All right, so, on the 5 million, I think we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
And just to confirm, that's the three-year CD ladder and the two, 2 million in money market. Answer, Jim's.
Okay, you, we got that. I'm, I'm just making sure.
The motion was Dick and the second was Cheryl, correct?
Correct, yes. All right. Now, we're getting into the other one. Consider Approval to Move the Reserve Fund into Higher Yield Money Market Account.
Now, my, my opinion is on this, why have any money market? Why not just ladder CDs since we have so much liquid in money market anyway? So, Cheryl, do you want to?
I, I asked that same question. You're going to earn a little bit more if you ladder CDs, I think.
That's the, but that's today's CD rate, which could drop like a rock.
But CDs you can lock in. Money market, you can't.
What if we did lock?
I mean, CDs, I mean, money market, I said the wrong, money market.
Do the same.
Yeah, what if we just maybe do 4 million in CDs and have another 2.3 in cash again?
In the money market?
Yeah.
Basically, so-
Do the same thing we just did on item five. We just split the money up.
I, I see you're going, why don't we use the same laddering for the, it's the 6 million and some dollars. We take the three and the rest, put it in the money market, the same principles. Does that make sense? I'd put it all CDs, but if you feel like we need even more money in the money market, we could break it up.
What do you think?
I, with not knowing what the next 24 months look like and the level of investment that we may be responsible for, I think-
Having a liquid reserve is-
I think having, breaking it up where we could keep, say, $3 million in cash in that money market, and then CD ladder the rest, and what we would do is extend, so, the 200- And what we would do is extend, so the $250,000 is a key component that keeps each CD insured. So we'll just have to add additional CDs to it for terms.
So what, if I understand what you're saying, that the motion would be for the reserve, that you put the same three million dollar number laddered and then the remainder in the money market, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Does that make sense to you?
Three and, three and 3.3.
Three million CDs.
All right, we're all square.
Reserve account, that's the motion, 3.3.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Three million to money market and 3.3 million to CDs.
Well, I'm thinking, yeah, I'm thinking it'd be easier to do in 25 or $250,000 tranche, so three million to CDs.
Okay.
And then the remainder to money market. Now, there is something that we need to figure out is when we set up these accounts, Madison's gonna request signatories, the signers on the account. I'll need a list of the signers and their social security numbers because they're gonna be on the account. So that's, the, the board needs to decide who, who's gonna be on the accounts.
You need somebody that's on here for a while, for three years.
I'll put my name on, you know, I'm doing everything else to sign contracts and stuff, so I'll do that, I'll put my name on there to begin with and we can.
So does it have a, be the board member? Can it be staff?
It could be the secretary treasurer, it could be the sta, it could be staff, it could be a board member, but, you know, I mean, it shouldn't be like everybody.
Yeah.
You need one member or two to sign?
Uh, I, I think a minimum of two.
You need to.
How about myself, the secretary, and Joseph?
I, I mean, I think that the, the tighter you get that, the better because it doesn't make us, the rest of us have responsibility.
All right, so the three of us, I'll make that motion, the three of us to be able to do that.
Do you want?
Do I have a second?
I'll have a second, I'll second.
Do you want to do it as position, chairman, secretary treasurer, and general manager?
Yeah, that's it, yes.
And that way, when those offices change, the, the new people would have to sign signature cards, but if those offices change, then.
Let's do that, let's do by position. Cheryl, they're gonna require minutes of the meeting as well.
To establish that.
Naming those individuals.
Okay, so that was your motion, I seconded it.
That position. All right, any more discussion?
The motion's by position, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Chairman, secretary treasurer, general manager.
If, if we have to fulfill what Jim said, then you had to say, at this point, these are the three names.
Right, which are currently Clay Davis, Steve Ledbetter, and Joseph Johnson.
So do we add that to our motion?
Please.
Okay, so.
Can you award our motion for us, please?
Sure, so, so the motion would be that the signatories on these accounts would be the chairman, the secretary treasurer, and the general manager by position, and those positions are currently filled by Clay Davis, chairman, Steve Ledbetter, secretary treasurer, and Jo, Joseph Johnson, general manager.
I second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand. Unanimous, thank you.
May, may I make one comment, came up here just a second. The $250,000 number is the FDIC insurance, that's why it's a maximum amount, that's why it's broken up into different.
Yeah, thank you for making sure everybody understands that. If you're not, if you haven't played in that world.
I don't have enough money to know about that.
All right, item number seven. Consider request to cancel the December 20, 2023, uh, regular scheduled meeting. Uh, the general manager will be out of town.
Did we actually put the vote on the other one?
Yes.
We did?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. I move we cancel December 20th.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, any more discussion on that?
Just so you're aware, I won't be here the November one. I'm available on vacation.
Okay, uh, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Uh, unanimous, thank you. Uh, item number eight, consider approval to select the grant writer and professional engineer for the CDBG 24 project.
So what you're looking at is the score sheets, um, so there are a resounding winner in each category, so the grant writer, it's a recommendation from the staff that we proceed contract talks with Alan Smith, and then Paragon Consulting Group was the firm for the engineer.
All right, do I have a motion to accept?
I, I have some questions, but go, somebody, did somebody make a motion and a second?
We have it.
There's not a second yet.
I'll second it for the purpose of discussion.
Thank you.
So, um, I was talking with one of the ladies at Three Rivers, and we, have we ever consulted them about grant writing? Because the county pays them almost $70,000 a year for those services. Now, I know that we've used Alan Smith Consulting in the past, but are, were, was, was Three Rivers contacted as a person to consider, this was a regular RFP, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So I don't know that they're on our list, but I'm saying we, we missed the opportunity to use those services for, especially for CDBG.
The, the different firms for grant writing and, um, professional engineering services, a list was generated off DCA's website for people that have, uh, done grants, awarded grants in the past. So I, what I did was I provided that list to Terry Bass, the procurement agent, and she's the one that actually sent out the requests. All I did was drafted the document that was gonna be put in the Griffin Daily News and the advertisement.
Well, I mean, I, clearly, I don't want you to change what you have here, but I'm simply saying.
Three Rivers.
That is the whole purpose of Three Rivers being there, they have full grant writing, um, capabilities. Um, I, I don't know who Terry sent this out to, but I, I think that if we're always sending them out to the same people, we're gonna always get the same people.
She would have published it on the, the standard, um, websites that, that she typically publishes RFPs to.
Yeah, I, see, and I don't know in terms of Three Rivers, if we, if Three River, and I say we because I'm sitting on that committee, if we actually go out looking for projects or if, because we're affiliated with each county having paid into it, that there is an expectation that the counties or the governments would actually come to them.
Would the authority be able to piggyback on that if it's funded by Spalding County?
Um, I think it's a community, community effort, I mean, I think they're available to the city as well as the county and any other governmental entity, but, but I'm just simply saying we are paying, the county is paying for that service. Clearly, they handle lots of things related to CDBGs and, and.
How about next time you're at a meeting, kind of clarify that and see if we can do that.
I just hate for us to pay for stuff that.
Twice, yes.
That someone's gonna, can provide for us and they have acceptable services.
I have a mo, I have a motion and a second.
The motion is to approve Alan Smith consulting and, uh, Pennant consulting?
And Paragon.
And Paragon.
Okay.
And what?
Oh, down here, I see, never, and Paragon.
So what, what is this CDBG gonna be for?
So we, the RFP was drafted where we're gonna look at three target areas, looking, uh, finishing out phase three of the Chestnut or the Dundee Mills area, looking at East Griffin, and then looking at the Pontry Hill subdivision.
Um, I, I, I think that those are very good areas that can use some help, however, just go back and, and address what Dick said. It is very disconcerting that almost a year after we have completed all the sewer work up at Dundee, that there has been no improvement in development or site. We've gone in as a county and, and tried to enforce code enforcement, to clean the streets off and get houses boarded up, but as a water authority, we don't, we really don't have a, a dog in the fight, but the county hasn't promoted that, and that's, I don't think that's something that the water authority does, but after the amount of money we've invested in there, I was hoping to see some development. So I think as we're looking forward, we really need to look at what the potentials are for improvement of the area, not just that you've got sewer now, but the aesthetics, whether you get sidewalks, whether you get the road paved, whether you create an area for, for rehab so that if there are homeowners, they can get their homes fixed and others can get, it's nothing happening there, and I don't want to see us go someplace else.
I do not think that there has really been any effort to put the word out that, hey, there, we didn't have sewer here, but now we do, and, I mean.
And I don't know if that's something we need to relay to the Board of Commissioners or if we as a board can, can advertise that to the community, but something needs to happen along with us providing these services because you're just not changing the area.
I think that's something that Spalding County and the City of Griffin, who we're gonna be turning over the assets to, could use their community engagement specialists to, to advertise, to, to developers.
Right, because I don't think anybody is doing that.
We, we need the, the Board of Commissioners bring it up and just say, hey, here's what the water authority did.
Right.
We were hoping that this is how it was gonna be done, I don't think anybody, the other three members of, are even paying attention.
No, show them a map, I don't, I don't, I just don't think people even know that it's happened, except outside of this room.
Right, because clearly, even with the other areas that are up there, it's, you know, if you were gonna build something, now you do have the ability to hook onto sewer to, and water to the City of Griffin, so.
When, when we discussed this at that meeting, the recommendation was it'd be included, that area, because they want to pick one that wins, and sometimes the lady said that the, if you've done two parts of a three-part plan, third part's a slam dunk, that you get approval, and she wanted to make sure that we did the best winning nun we could. So I'm with you, that to me is not my priority, but it might be the one that gets you the money slam dunk, so.
Right, and I, I think as a county, maybe we should be talking to the housing authority, somebody who has the ability to come in and, and build or rebuild or, or.
Yep.
That's not a water authority thing, but going forward, before we put all of our money in our eggs in that basket, we need to have some backup that somebody's coming behind us.
Stakeholders.
To do other things.
I agree.
You know, to complement what we've done with the, the sewer and water infrastructure.
Honestly, this was a more challenging process than I ever thought it would be. There, I don't know about if Joseph had the same expectation, but there were, I mean, there were people that just, I mean, didn't respond, there were lots of folks who were, not excited about it, and mainly because I think they didn't really understand what was happening, and so it was, it was a lot more, the, the process itself was much more challenging than, than I thought, with some people actually saying no, which was a surprise to me.
So, so I just saying, moving forward, we, as an authority, we need to say to the county, look, we put the, the pipe in the ground, what are y'all gonna do about the sidewalks, what are you gonna do about the road, what are you gonna do about repairing these homes?
And.
To accentuate what we've done.
Joseph, if you will remind the Board of Commissioner folks that we need to bring this up on the Board of Commissioners, that's our job to do that, but if you had to remind us, um, we will be glad to say those words to the other three commissioners.
And to Ms. Gwen's point, the intent of this was, based on the planning committee's recommendation, is we're gonna survey these three areas, we're gonna get the results back, and then the planning committee is gonna meet and actually determine which project we want to write the grant on, so I think, I think that conversation should be had as part of that group discussion.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Yes, ma'am.
The, or when I made the motion, I was not aware of the, what Gwen just mentioned about the, the, the Three Rivers. Or in light of that, if, with, with the, if the board was, could save money, if the authority could save money, then should we not look at that before making this final decision?
Is this a time-sensitive issue?
It is time-sensitive.
All right. We either, we miss it, we make it or we miss the, the deadline to get the.
And right now, we're, uh, the RFP stated that we needed the preliminary engineer report uh, by the middle of November, I mean, it's, I'm hoping that we can hit the application deadline for FY '24 CDBG.
Uh, great concept, Ms. Fanny, and we'll get Gwen to go back.
I would definitely, maybe we can get them, the Three Rivers, to come and talk to us, do a short presentation on what services and what we might be available for, for going forward.
Going forward, all right, any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Unanimous, thank you. Other business, item number one, chairman requests that the bylaws committee discuss and bring a recommendation to the board on the following proposed amendment. Uh, Ms. Gwen, you're, you're, I believe, the chairman, if you would look at that and then our next committee, uh, next meeting, uh, bring those forth as your recommendations.
Who's on the committee with Gwen?
Um, I, I don't know, I know Cheryl is on the committee.
Fanny's on it and Clay is on it.
Fanny. Okay, so the.
Okay, so, uh, we'll.
So, so I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, and, and Cheryl did submit a request to the meeting, but we, we never had a meeting, so I was not aware.
Your chair.
Right, so, so, yeah, we definitely need to sit down and, um, uh, my only concern with the, um, absenteeism, which at this point is not a huge problem for us, but as county appointees, the county has come up, basically adopted what Park and Rick uses as their attendance policy, and we, we can look at that, but it, it, you know, it's, it talks about what is a, what is a real meeting? We have, you know, two meetings and then the regular meeting. So if somebody technically misses a meeting, a planning meeting or whatever in a month, they're off the board. So I think we need to talk about that and we need to put the specifics of, of what, so, yeah.
I would think it would be only regular meetings of the authority, I would not think it would include committee meetings.
It needs to be specified what it is.
Absolutely, and also, the, the wording here with unexcused meeting, unexcused meetings will be removed from their position and a new member will be appointed, that's not something that this board actually has the authority to do, it would be recommend to the Board of Commissioners for removal and reappointment.
We'll bring the language back to you at the next meeting.
Let's make sure, I want to make sure this is done before Cheryl gets out of here. She's good at the wording, so I want to make sure that before Cheryl finishes up, we have blessed this and done all the stuff we need to do with it.
Stephanie had said that you had to be real careful how you worded that second one, but at the, and I think Gwen was at the luncheon learn, when it was mentioned that every board should, should address the absenteeism part of it.
And because some boards don't even have bylaws and, or don't know that they have bylaws, they certainly don't follow them, so.
We got two, we got standing committees and. If I'm reading this correctly, three board members would serve on that committee, and then the board chair may appoint three or four customers.
Well, that's part of the wording, is we have to decide what you want to put in there, that's why it's a proposal.
And then they're gonna serve as voting members on that committee, so if you don't want to have a tie, you're gonna appoint four. So now we're at seven, we have two committees, seven to 14, we got nine people here, so now we have a 23-member water authority board?
You're not on the water authority just because you're on a committee.
But they get voting rights.
Not on the, not on this board.
Not on this board.
But on the planning committee who brings the recommendations to us.
Yeah, that's, that's a problem for me.
Yeah, I, 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 look, we put that in there, that's an easy scratch out, we want to make sure that if we think there's needs to be people on there.
That's right.
It was easier to stick it in there and line it out than it was to leave it out and say, we'll bring it back in.
We'll bring it back in for October.
And if you feel like, I mean, you can just say that, that the chair can appoint non-members to serve, you don't even have to give a specific number.
And you don't have to give them voting rights.
And you don't have to give them voting rights.
Joseph would have 50 bosses.
We don't have to give them voting rights, no, 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 that, no non-member of this board is going to have any authority over its employees.
Okay, but if someone on the committee calls Joseph, requesting information, how Joseph, you see, you see what I'm saying here?
Yes. I believe we will scratch that comment out all the way around. We can discuss it, but I believe.
I think having non-members sit down in the planning commission, if they're knowledgeable, is a good thing, but not, can't vote, but we don't vote in the committee anyway.
You just get a consensus.
But, but what, what I would be concerned about is, at that, is we don't do a good job of ourselves of keeping the things that we discuss in committee that come to us and end up in closed session. So I don't have any confidence that someone who is not commit, a committed member and appointed member to this board is not gonna take that information that we have in committee and do something else with it.
I have another suggestion then.
I hadn't even thought about that.
I have another suggestion, and that would be that, that non-members of the authority I have another suggestion, and that would be that non-members of the authority not be appointed to standing committees, but if ad hoc committees are formed, then the chair would have the ability to appoint non-members of the authority to serve in positions on ad hoc committees.
For some special topic that you want to look at?
Right.
So, the wording is everything?
It is. Yes, ma'am.
It's got to be addressed, but I think we need to include some people, and even, to be honest, standing committee meetings are open.
Yeah, they're open.
They are open meetings. Anybody can come.
So, if it's in the committee, it's public information.
But our history has been that what is discussed in the committee meeting may come back to this board as a closed-session item, whether it's real estate, personnel, and because of that, even though that's an open meeting, that thing may very well come back to us and be something that is litigious.
And just as a reminder, even though we haven't used this in the past, there can be an executive session in committee meetings as well, as long as they're for the appropriate legal reasons.
And the minutes are open, too.
I see it as a dilution.
The minutes are open to the committee.
Everybody just think through it. We're going to have a special call. The committee will come together, fix it out, and come back to us.
At the next meeting.
And be able to say, here, if you've got some specific things, get to one of us that's on the committee and say, I agree, disagree, and then when we come back to you, we'll be able to do it. And truly, if it's not done in the October meeting, we can do it in the November meeting.
Well, it doesn't have to be done before I'm gone. As I said, they were just brought up at the luncheon learn that we had with Spalding County, and...
We're good.
I just thought they were good ideas.
Yep, and you brought it forth, and we... I kind of dropped the ball on it. All right. Item number 13. The Secretary Treasurer is not here. Item number 14. General Manager's comments. Just a second. While they're talking over there, I want to... We had, at the last meeting, we approved some wording that Dick gave to a motion to take the concept for approval, the concept for using 16. Everybody should remember, we did that. Out of the four, we picked that one to be able to do it. We had a long discussion on money and on strategic planning and things like that. Those discussion points did not get into Dick's original motion, how it was done. Dick made a motion. Then we had a series of items we wanted to have done, but the motion did not ever change, and then we came back to be able to do this. The proof of concept is extremely powerful words from the world I used to be in, to make sure that we do this exactly right, that once we get it done the first time, we should be able to go to the next one, and the next one, and the next one, to be able to do it. So, I am extremely concerned that we take, and as the Secretary Treasurer says to me all the time, let's go slow to get it done fast. So, I would like to ask Dick to clarify whatever the right words are, your motion.
I guess I'm stuck. The intent was that we prove the concept to move forward on the Arthur Bolton Sewer Project. It was not meant that we start spending money and stuff, but the concept was that, as we discussed in the planning committee, is to create a schedule and chart of the next 12 to 18 months of what they'll look like. And Joseph has been doing this with our consultant engineer, that now we have proved the concept to bring back the plan, the stakeholders, the committees, this and that, and the other, a stand plan, and we approve that plan as we move... Steps as we move along, that's when we take the action and spend the money. It was not that I gave anybody a blanket check or authority to go start doing things, but to move forward with this plan, and that's exactly what we discussed, and Joseph is working with on the consultant, a plan that we can approve specific actions. Till then, other, accepting one action we took in closed session, which is private, but otherwise, create a plan, and that's what we're doing.
All right. Does everybody understand that? I want to make sure that... This is Vice Chair.
Do you have what you need to do everything that was discussed out here and in there? What do you need?
Before you start, let me just make a comment about this. We discussed this at the Board of Commissioners, and I'm just going to be frank. The Board of Commissioners was discussing it as if it's, you know, we've got to do this thing, blah, 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 and doing that thing has to do with us. So, clearly, that meeting that we need to have to tell the Board of Commissioners what we're thinking of needs to happen as soon as possible.
So, that's happening on October 2nd, and it's the intent... The October 2nd meeting's going to happen with the BOC and the workshop to discuss this plan. Then, I'm actually working on nailing down a call with Rebecca to go over this schedule that we'll present at the Planning Committee the following week. And getting the BOC's buy-in is crucial. Without the BOC buy-in, if the Board of Commissioners says, well, that's not the direction we want to take, then we kind of have to start from scratch and go after another target area.
We need a checklist with measurable goals to drive this to completion, and then not languish meeting after meeting after, well, let's talk about that.
Don't you need stakeholder input, though, to formulate that checklist?
They need to put on the list, and we need to accomplish it and check it off. We need something with a timeline. You know, this is drug on long enough.
And that exactly is what... My understanding is that we're moving forward. You got to create a stakeholder committee. You got to do these steps, and my motion said nothing about authorizing spending any money for anything.
That's why I'm asking him. Do you have what you need right now?
Right now, yes.
To get this done.
Correct. The October and November meetings are going to be really... They could set the stage for a busy January 1st.
I'm limited, you know, what I can say. I just want to make sure you've got what you need, because we're all going to look to you to drive this to a finish.
So, at the meeting the other night, part of the thing that Steve kept saying to the community as we talked about our millage rate was that we need industry. We've got to have industry, blah, 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 blah. And everybody's saying, if next year, if we can get this many places, and I'm like, y'all are talking about stuff that can't happen unless the Water Authority makes something happen.
Well, they got to...
So, they need...
They got to come to an agreement with us to protect our investment.
They've already, yeah, they've already come full circle about what they really need and what they project, but they're, as a board, we have no game plan to get there, and that is where the authority comes in.
Correct.
But as an authority member, I don't think that the county needs to just be a check-on-the-paper partner because the advantages of what it is that we may be able to do are going to directly benefit them. So, you know, being a stakeholder also means that you have some skin in the game.
I say a check, we get their buy-in, you know.
Well, yeah, I mean, we're working at that, yeah.
At some point, we got to itemize this list so that we can actually accomplish the task on it and be done with it.
Well, I think they're based on the conversations that we have. They're already ahead of us, and they don't even really know how to get there, and we're the how to get there. So, that's why I say, as soon as we can get in the same room and get that, okay, officially, yeah, we're on board, then I think the sooner you can make the moves that you need to make.
We got that coming. Next month, we should have some concrete steps to approve and move along, and if any of those steps require spending money, then this board's going to have to authorize it. We have to authorize that.
Absolutely, and once we get the checklist for this one, then going and going to the next one, we have the same basic checklist to be able to do it, and that's why I'm trying to make sure we kind of go...
We need the county seriously engaged because zoning and all those rules out there are the key, whether this works or not, and how they handle that property.
Ordinances that have to be done, so yes.
Ordinances, development stuff.
I just want to make sure everybody understands. I know that...
We're trying to make the train go. I think I can. I think I can, but yeah.
Okay. Any other comments from you? All right.
The report's in the mail.
I'm going through authority member comments. We'll start with Ms. Fanny.
No, thank you. I will not be here next month.
Okay.
The whole month?
No, for the meeting.
Oh, okay, so we'll have our meeting early.
Yes, okay. Mr. Dick?
I'll be here as standing unless...
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jim? Mr. Jeff?
I don't do long-term planning anymore.
All right. Ms. Gwen?
I just want to say that I am thoroughly amazed almost every time that I come to the meeting at the enormous amount of work that we're getting done. Also, just the knowledge of the amount of work that staff is doing, which in the past, we had no clue what was going on in the office part, and I just... You guys are probably one of the best boards that I... Working boards that I sit on, so...
I agree.
It's Brandon. They're pointing at you.
Brandon says, I'll take credit for that. Okay, all right. Vice Chair?
I just want to make sure we get this plan in place, and we can start moving forward with it.
Yes, this is...
This is drug on long enough.
This is big for the county. I'm trying to make sure everybody understands. This is a... When we make this step, it's really going to be something big. All right. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
All right. No, that's all I've got. We've got... October 2, when we're talking about this meeting with the Board of Commissioners, is also the date we're going to do the millage rate. It is a big day for us.
I don't want to come anywhere near that meeting.
Me, either.
No.
It's a big, big day, so we'll have a whole bunch of stuff being done at that time. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. We're adjourned. Thank you.